I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Destin City Council, July 19, 2021, to order. First up, we have invocation by Pastor David Butler, Faith Assembly Christian Church. Pastor?
Thank you, Mayor. Would you bow your heads, please? Glorious God of heaven, we thank you for our beautiful city of Destin, the community where we are blessed with great people, great leaders, great schools, great churches, and great commerce with our businesses, and we especially thank you for these beautiful waters, your almighty creation. We are truly blessed in many ways. You promised to open doors of blessing and abundance for your people. We ask that you would work mightily in us this evening. Come upon us and cause us to have a productive meeting. Lead each one of us so that we can make fruitful contributions at this time. Enable us to think and strategize in ways that will achieve great results. Purify our thoughts and motives so that each one of us will enter this meeting desiring the good of others and the pleasure of your great name, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Sorry about that. Can't tell much difference. I have such a big mouth. Is there any changes in tonight's agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Let's take a vote. Eyes have it, so moved. Up next, item 1A, approval of minutes of July 12, 2021, budget workshop.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? Vote is unanimous, so moved. Item 1B, approval of minutes of June 21, 2021, regular city council meeting. I have a motion.
Second.
A second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? Eyes have it, so moved. Item 2A, introduction of Captain Matt Abbott, replacement for Major Mike Howe, Commissioner Major, as District 3 Commander at City of Destin Lay is on. Major Mike Howe? He just got here.
Mr. Mayor, Council, how you doing tonight, City Manager? It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Sheriff Aiden has promoted me to Operations Major beginning August 1, and Lieutenant Matt Abbott, who's been with the agency 15 years, he comes to us from the Communications Division where he oversees all of our countywide communications now, will be replacing me as the East District Commander on August the 1, and I wanted to stop by and introduce him. He'll be reaching out to you. I'm sure you're not going to see any drop off in service. Matt's a great guy. Matt, you want to say anything?
No, it's just a pleasure to be here. It's not my first time in Destin. I served as a sergeant out here for a few years, so I look forward to working with everybody. I'm born and raised here in Fort Walton Beach, and I love this community, so I'm happy to work with you all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. We're going to miss you, Major.
You'll be seeing me around.
I know you will. All right, thank you. But at least now we know who to call, not you. All right. Next up, public comments on the agenda items that are not public hearings and any other matters not on the agenda. I'll just start from one side of the room to the other. I want to remind everybody, you have three minutes. Just when you come up to the podium, hit the button, state your name and your address for the public record, and when you get close to your times up, I'll nicely encourage you to wrap up your thoughts. So, and now that we have in-person meetings, I don't have to look at Catherine or Ray anymore, so it's just if you're here, you get an opportunity to speak, and I'll just start over here. To my left, if there's anyone that would like to come and make public comment, approach the microphone at this time. Nobody? Center of the room? Don't throw no elbows on the way up.
Oh, okay. That's why I didn't recognize it. Use baseball with me, please. Use baseball with me, please. Since I have about eight things, can I just take 24 minutes?
Sure.
Shane Moody, President/CEO of the Destin Chamber, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for this time to speak to you. Last month, I came to you and talked to you about the TDC Bed Tax District expansion, and to let you know, inform you where the Chamber was on that. And at the time, we had a no position due to our need and want to get more information on what was being put out there. We did have an Executive Committee meeting last week to discuss the TDC taxing district, and I do have some Executive Committee members with me tonight. They're not going to get up and speak because it would just be ditto, so, but they are here, and I did want to point them out. And Pastor David's a member of our board, too. As we continue to evaluate the TDC taxing district expansion from a global perspective, we feel that the concept of expanding the district is a good one. We understand the business behind it and the opportunity behind it. We still want to review the ordinance as a full board before making any statement about full-on support, but we do feel that conceptually, the county and the TDC are headed in the right direction. We have a copy of the ordinance. I received it this morning, and several of us have reviewed it. It looks to us as if much of what the Chamber wanted and what you wanted as a city have been included in the ordinance. We know you still have some things that you need answered, just as we do. For example, how are they going to determine the 4% and 5% differences in North and South County? That's one thing that stood out. The definition of Destin in the ordinance is wrong. It says the Santa Rosa Bridge to the Mid Bay Bridge Road will even out Crystal Beach. So, those are some things that we have picked up on. Let me also say that we certainly understand the negative optics of some of the things that have occurred. We don't blame you for being upset when you were left out of that meeting with the other municipalities. The other municipalities got together to discuss the issue. You should have been included, and you should be upset about being left out. And I can say that because I can relate. There was also a meeting of the other three chambers of Commerce in the county that we were not invited to, that I happened to find out about before the meeting took place, and we kind of wedged our way in there, was able to get three of my Executive Committee members to go with me so that we could state our no position at that time until we got more information. Like you, we wanted to see the ordinance before we took a position. I do want to say this, the TDC has been really good to and for Destin. Over the past several years, they've helped fund many projects and helped Destin with additional funding for needed services, lifeguards, additional public safety during busy times, funding for the Crosstown Connector, beach cleanup, beachfront acquisition, and multiple other things. We have had many people work hard over many years to improve the relationship between the city and the county, and we've come a long way. If you weren't here in the early to mid 2000s and didn't see the way it was then, I can tell you, it wasn't easy and it was not pretty. Those of us who have been around here remember those days. And to see all that the TDC is doing now is a big breath of fresh air. It's creative, it's smart, it's Destin-Fort Walton Beach branding with the CBB, the convention center, the airport, the website. Destin is the brand, and it's the brand that they are pushing. We don't want to lose any of that. So, as you move forward in your consideration and discussion of opposition or support, please find the answers to your questions as you so deserve. As we, the Chamber, move forward with our consideration, we would like for our questions to be answered as well. We have a meeting scheduled next week just to do that. I'll do my best to keep you all posted on where we are in the process, and again, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Shane. Appreciate it very much. All right, next, come on up. Button's already on, so just state your name and address.
Jim Bagby, 4709 Seastar Vista, and I spoke with you about the TDC also, and I take an opposite position. I've briefly reviewed the revised ordinance, and it still doesn't do what we need it to do, period. I support what Judge Burns or Mr. Burns has presented to you at the last meeting. I think it's still valid. I think that's still the path forward because the county has not come far enough. Remember, anything that they put in that ordinance, they and they alone can amend that ordinance whenever they want. And so for them to say, to throw you a couple of bones and pat you on the head and say, "Nothing to see here, move along," is not acceptable to the citizens of this city. The fact that they don't even know where Destin is, you know, I don't live in the taxing district. My neighbors will be glad to know that they can keep that 5% of revenue for the next 20 years because Crystal Beach, where I live, is not included. But there are other problems with that draft ordinance, and I would just urge you on items 4A and 4B to follow the staff recommendation and move forward on the challenge to the ordinance, their ability to do the ordinance. The other thing I want to speak about briefly is I applaud you for the stop signs, the staff's recommendation for the stop signs out in Crystal Beach. We need, Dolphin Street is a raceway, and I know there are several streets in this city that are raceways. The speed humps don't work. We need speed tables, and we would need a three-way stop at John also to break up. So, you have Scenic 98, you have a speed table, you have a stop sign at John, you have a speed table, you already have the stop sign at Luke, and then you would do the other stop sign there at the two neighborhoods, Windstar and Woodlands. So, I urge you to look at that and to continue to improve the safety, particularly in that area of town. That is a residential street. I know everybody in the city thinks that Crystal Beach is nothing but a bunch of rental houses. Unfortunately, there's too many of those, but we're not all rental houses in that part of town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bagby. Up next, come on up, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Council, I'll just briefly communicate with Ms. Abir. I couldn't communicate with you from Sunshine, but did communicate with the balance unit to make sure that you know, as mentioned, the ordinance was sent out Friday. My name's Mel Ponder. I live at 801 Keller. It's right next to the circle where AT&amp;T does not work, according to Councilman Morgan, but Keller Drive, Destin. Again, so you had it. Please, you've all got my cell numbers. Let me know. Look forward to what direction y'all have amongst yourself and discuss it, and then letting us know or staff to staff, attorney to attorney. They had meetings today, thankfully, and those voices need to be heard. You've got two, I know Councilman Destin and I talked the other day, you had two items before you today. This council made the call to get those going if you want. We'll carry them and ask for either a delay or we'll have the legal process of mediation. And so this council, it's out there that what direction you may want to go in, and that's absolutely fine. I'll work with you the best that I can, but each of you got it. Let me know. Collectively, I think, Mayor or Councilmen, y'all can decide how y'all put the information together to counter, or, I mean, you've got Mr. Moody's comments, you've got Mr. Bagby's comments, but y'all will decide what's best for you, and then let us know, and we'll start going back and forth. But just to make sure I'm here, if there's a question comes up, let me know. Thanks.
Thank you, Mel. All right. Next up, speak now, forever, hold your peace until the end of the meeting where everybody gets another opportunity to talk for three minutes at the very tail end. All right. Seeing no further volunteers, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period, and we will move right on into our next agenda item, which is long. So, sir, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 4A is consideration of a joint resolution between Okaloosa County municipalities to address the TDC expansion concerns. And we have Mr. Bowman here for myself to answer any questions.
All right. Well, at this time, there's a recommended motion, and I will entertain a motion to start Robert's Rules of Order, and we'll take it from there.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All right. I have a motion and I have a second. And Kyle, would you like to, I'll let you lead off before any council members weigh in with any discussion. Go ahead.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. So, this is a part of the continuing saga of the TDC expansion. The City of Fort Walton Beach did approach the City of Destin about adopting a joint resolution amongst the municipalities that would do two things. One, it would ask that the B OCC delay the referendum election by 60 days, and two, it asks that the BOC direct its staff to institute the local collection method. And I believe you all know this at this point, but the local collection method is so important because that is the only type of collection method by which we can determine where funds are actually collected from. Otherwise, the DOR does it, and they just send it to the county in a lump sum. So, if the council would like, it can adopt this joint resolution. I do not know what the other municipalities plan on doing. I do know there's been some indication from some cities such as Crestview, Shalimar, that they're not interested in adopting it, so I don't know exactly what direction it will take at other board meetings.
We can assume Fort Walton will, though, because they're the ones that asked us to sign on, correct?
They, it did. It was an email from their city manager to our city manager initially. So, they, Fort Walton Beach is a little strange because in the month of July, they do not have regular council meetings. So, if they were to adopt this anytime soon, they would have to call a special meeting to actually consider it. I don't think their city manager's necessarily opposed to that, but I think he wants to see what happens around him first.
And the only comment I want to make is this is the business of the council, and we've been presented with a joint resolution that is pretty straightforward, and in the interest of being businesslike, I just think that we ought to let our votes do the talking, unless anyone wants to weigh in at this point. If not, I will call this to a vote. Let's vote. The vote is 6-1, so moved. Eyes have it.
Mr. Mayor, item 4B is consideration of a resolution for the option of commencement of local government alternative dispute process under Chapter 164 Florida statutes. And we have Mr. Jeff Burns, Special Counsel, here to answer any questions along with staff.
And just like we did in the previous deal, if, just one second, Mr. Burns, I'll entertain a motion at this point, and then we'll start out with Mr. Burns' presentation.
I move to adopt Resolution 21-08.
I second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, and we're going to open this for discussion. And Mr. Burns, you open the discussion.
Okay, and it's pretty straightforward, the resolution itself, and so I won't rehash all the verbiage in there. There's two basic conflicts set forth. One, the voting issue of not allowing the citizens of Destin to vote. The second issue being the actual format of the expansion, or the, we'll say the expansion of the TDD district as the county's proposing to expand it. And I believe there's, those are the two conflicts I set forth in the resolution, and that's what I can summarize, was the conflict after speaking to everyone with the city and kind of analyzing the situation. And so, it's set forth as it is in the resolution. If you vote tonight to approve of the resolution, that'll start the process, and it should be able to be completed right up before the referendum is actually voted on by the North End residents. If it actually goes forward without any delays, that'll be if there's no delays in the scheduling. And so, if y'all do pass it, this resolution tonight, I'll ask that two designees for the Destin City Council be named as point people for the first meeting, because the first meeting has to occur within 30 days of today's date, or actually, it will be, when Mr. Hoff said, it actually gets served with the resolution itself, which will happen tomorrow or the next day. So, that'll be 30 days from that date. We have to have the first public meeting with the County Commission. I don't expect all of y'all, all eight of y'all, to be able to be ready to be there on that day, because all the budget workshops and everything that you have going on right now. So, I think if y'all name two point people, that'll make it much easier for the scheduling purposes, and all y'all do have a right to be there. So, y'all won't be cut out of the meeting, but for that first meeting, the point person will make it easier to get it done, because the session only requires one individual from the board, the city manager, and the attorneys be present with the County Commission, their administrator, and their, at least one elected official from the County Commission. And so, if you have any questions about the nuances of the resolution, I'm ready to answer them for you.
Council, okay, Ms. Abir.
Would it be appropriate if I wanted to do it, if I'm on the TDC council?
There wouldn't be any conflict on that at all. I guess since you are a member of that board, it only, actually, no, because it's going to be a publicly noticed meeting, so there won't be any Sunshine Law issues. There's other board members of the TDD there.
What I'd like to do, if it pleases the council at this time, is we'll address that, appointing two people after we vote on whether we're going to do the resolution or not. And if we vote in favor of it, which I'm in favor of it, then we can appoint two point people to help to attend it with Mr. Burns. So, any other questions for Mr. Burns on the resolution as he's written it? Go ahead, Mr. Destin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just so I understand what I think I'm reading, the main two points here. Number one, the amount of people that are getting to vote, it appears that as the county is going forward so far, they are not going to allow a substantial number of the folks who are residents and voters in the county to vote on what is arguably the most important issue to come in front of the county for the last 30 years, whether to collect millions of dollars more in taxes and spend it to attract more visitors here. That's one part of it, Jeff, that...
That is. Well, all the voters in the actual existing TDT district, which is everyone on that map that was shown a few minutes ago, and I think it's about a third of the voters in the entire county roughly, will be completely cut out of the whole referendum and will not be permitted to vote.
And the second point, and I'm not sure if that's what the resolution says, has to do with the local collection. Is that correct, or am I getting off? What is it?
Local collection's actually not touched on too much in there. It's more a broad brush, actually, and we don't want to get into the nuances of the disagreement on the format of the various plans. We touched more on, we believe, and I'll say "we" is the legal team working on the issue, we believe the Walton County method is really the only way to achieve what the county actually wants to get done. And now, before I get too much more into it, I know the mayor doesn't want to hit too much on that. It's just that's the firm belief of the legal team, and I know the local collection method is sort of a minor issue in the grand scheme of the bigger issue of how to actually implement the percentages on the taxes, because the way the tax is implemented is the bigger issue. If you have two separate districts charging a different tax rate, that's where the whole legal problem comes into play, and they've already admitted. And I won't say it's an admission of one that they're necessarily falling on the sword on in a negative light, but they've now conceded the third cent. And so, they've conceded that third cent, and that already builds in and bakes in the fact that there's going to be a northern district that charges four cents, a southern district that charges five cents, and excise taxes can't be charged at different rates within a geographic boundary area. And so, that kind of is what the resolution says. We didn't touch at all on the local collection method. The local collection method's kind of more of a in-the-weeds detail that we could have included that, I guess, but I wanted to leave that out.
And I think it's kind of a bedrock issue underlying the rest of them. How could you possibly charge at different rates in different parts of the county without local collection? You wouldn't know where you were charging what, so...
And I'd like to add, Mr. Destin, we just passed a resolution that did make the local collection part of that resolution, so we covered that base with the first vote that we just had.
And as a reminder, y'all can settle this at any time with the county. If y'all do pass the resolution tonight, and y'all reach some sort of resolution in a week or two, you can stop the whole ADR process.
Yeah, and I was struck by the fact that we have, first, we have the bare bones issue of whether anybody, whether everybody gets to vote or not. And secondly, they're going to, according to the votes taken so far and what they sent to the supervisor, they're going to do a mail-in only ballot, which I don't know if they've been paying attention to national news lately, but a mail-in only, according to Republicans, which I thought they all were, is subject to a lot of problems. I mean, you mail it to a house, and who could fill it out? It's got all kinds of issues. And I think fundamentally, it's strategically being done in an effort to make sure it passes. in an effort to make sure it passes.
All right. Are you done? Kevin?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Burns, since the commission meeting a month or two ago, and this was first presented, and we started getting in touch with you shortly after, have there been other meetings, I guess, since then, before Friday, about the new ordinance that just came out in the past, you know, 48 hours, to work with any of you guys?
Any other, I would defer, actually, to Mr. Bowman. Prior to me being retained two weeks ago, actually officially at that point in time, I had not partaken in any meetings. I know I was hired a month ago, but I didn't partake in any meetings with the county. I've only partaken in meetings in the last two weeks, and we took place one today, and I know Mr. Bowman probably can touch on that. All I know about was the secret meeting, and I called it my memo.
Sure.
And that was a meeting that Mr. Bowman was cut out of the meeting and was not notified of it.
So Kevin, if you're talking about the ordinance specifically itself, the ordinance, Mel and deputy county administrator were kind enough to bring that to us, fiscal copy of it Friday. They brought it to me and Lance. Webb was on the phone, and so was the county attorney. That was the first time I saw the physical draft of the ordinance itself. Today, the city attorneys and the county attorney did have a meeting where we discussed, and Mr. Burns was part of that meeting, where we discussed various legal elements of the ordinance, and the city managers and the deputy county administrator had a separate meeting regarding it.
So that was the, that was the only meeting, since...
Regarding the ordinance itself, now, we have had various other meetings with the county. Was it eight meetings, like they say in their memo? I don't know, I didn't count. We had various phone calls, some lasted just a couple of minutes, setting up other meetings.
So this 164, again, like you reiterate, allows us to go forward the proceedings according to the law, and we can rescind it, like you said, so that gives us the option. So, all right, well, thank you.
And ultimately, it'll result in one kind of smaller meeting in a few weeks, within 30 days. That'll set up the big, bigger meeting that will happen within 50 days of today's date, and that bigger meeting, I envision, probably will have both full boards present, hopefully, and then other cities can partake to, because if you pass this resolution, we'll mail copies of the resolutions to the other cities, and they can take...
All right, and last, Ms. Ramswell?
Thank you, Mayor. I had sent over today to you and our attorneys a list of line item comments and queries and various things having to do with concerns as to how everything is laid out, so I won't go through all that here, since I know you've got it. I will let everyone in on the fact that when I learned about the June 28th meeting as brought forward in Mr. Burns' memo, I did a public records request at the county for anything, be it handwritten notes, audio, video, emails, anything having to do with that meeting, and what I received back was the map and the PowerPoint that were shown at the Board of County Commissioners meeting the week prior, and some accompanying information from the ordinance, nothing in terms of minutes or recordings or anything. And when I wrote back and said, where is any sort of written record, where's even a calendar invite or anything of that nature, I received a very, no comments, but literally just a calendar invite that showed who had been invited at least to that meeting. But it is concerning to me, and I would hope that at some point, we could find out why we weren't invited and what actually was said and occurred, but lots of concerns surrounding this, same as everyone up here.
And I know Mr. Bowman did bear some brunt at the meeting on Friday for the secret meeting language, and I thank him for doing that for me, so...
All right, everyone, Mr. Burns, thank you so much, and we're not done yet.
Okay.
We're working together for a while. So appreciate your legal advice, I support it 100%, and we have a motion and a second.
One more question, Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Meeting that was held today with city managers, I suppose that the lawyer didn't go to, you had your separate meeting. Lance, what went on at that meeting? Did they keep any minutes of that meeting?
No, I didn't see anyone keeping minutes at that meeting. The content was extremely similar to what Commissioner Ponder and the deputy had presented to us on Friday, and they pretty much just rolled out the ordinance. My understanding was it was possibly the first time some of the other city managers had seen the ordinance, and we had the opportunity to view it on Friday, so...
Any questions about any of the detail on the ordinance at all?
Sure, there were, there were some questions in there, and I had one question personally about, just about the way it was worded, the wording of the city of Destin's voting rights, just, we were, we were being represented, but I didn't know that the wording was correct, so I wanted to know that, because it didn't specifically say a member of council, and it may be semantics, but I was just concerned about that. I wanted to make sure that we would be represented, and we did, we got more than one seat in this most recent draft, so there were questions about that. There were definitely, there's a table in there that explains, or tries to explain, the percentages going to the existing, to the existing TDC versus the expansion part of the TDC, and it's fairly confusing. So there were, there were a lot of questions about what those percentages meant and why, in some cases, they weren't equal. So that was the brunt of it. Fort Walton Beach expressed similar concerns with just representation on the council moving forward and how to guarantee that the people in the existing TDC don't get left out as this thing moves forward.
Thank you, and I look forward to having a public discussion about the ordinance and what can be done to improve it.
Yeah, and I think that's the whole part, that's exactly what we're going to do during the A D R process.
I certainly hope, I hope that that happens.
That's, well, that's what Florida statute's set it up for.
I understand that, but it seems to be no sanctions if it doesn't happen, that I can tell in the statute. We'll see.
I do have a question. For content questions within the ordinance and within the, how they're structuring, the table specifically, how can we get clarity on what it is they mean? Because there are multiple different interpretations of that table, and then there's other language, obviously, throughout it, that is, is very muddy.
Well, the attorneys, I know, we, Mr. Bowman and I, or one of the two of us can call Ms. Hoshiara and talk to her, at least from the lawyer perspective. Now, we won't be able to talk to anyone else other than her unless we get permission to do so, but we'll do our best to get an answer for you, and I'm sure Lance can probably do the same, too.
And I think you can present a list of those type of questions at that first meeting, and definitely at the second one, because those are the questions that need to be asked.
I would encourage, though, before that first meeting, to start getting questions to us if y'all do have concerns, because it is 30 days from now, and we're starting to run up on the referendums in early October, and so don't hesitate to send questions to us, just again, don't send them to each other.
Well, for us to start that process, we got to vote on this resolution, so without any further ado, I think we do that, and then we, the games begin. So let's take a vote. For the public record, the vote is unanimous, eyes have it. Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Okay, two designees, too, real quick, if y'all don't mind, I can go sit down and just write down whoever y'all decide will be the two designees for the council.
That's what I was going to ask for next. Do you, do you have any preferences?
Really and truly, if you can just guarantee sometime in the first two weeks of August, you can just definitely make sure you're going to be there. I can at least have someone to schedule those meetings with as a representative of the council, because we won't know the exact deadline until Mr. Hoff said it actually gets served with the resolution and the letter, which maybe will happen tomorrow, probably definitely by Wednesday, but I just need two points of contact.
Well, I, Ms. Abear already expressed the desire, and Mr. Destin has been kind of carrying the lead a little bit up to this point. Does anyone else have any ideas, or are you available?
I do, but if they are both interested, well, I'll let them, since he's mayor, Preble Tim, and Teresa is the appointee.
Yeah, I was going to volunteer myself, but if that's right.
And each one of y'all are invited, or will be able to attend the meetings, because I think two people definitely can attend, so...
All right.
I do, I very, and I'll be there regardless, so...
Yeah, we all can go, we're just going to have two formal representatives.
That's kind of questionable, so I'd rather let Ms. Preble take my volunteer spot. If you want to be the first and you be the second.
Dr. Ramswell and Mr. Schmidt.
I will nominate Mr. Schmidt and Dr. Ramswell to be our representatives.
I got a nomination, I got a second. Do we need to vote on that?
I think direction's good enough.
Okay, we got it. Does that go with everybody? All right, so be it.
Well, thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to serve you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. All righty. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Burns. I do want to add that I do look forward to working in the near term with the county to professionally resolve this matter. I think we can come to an agreement, I just think we need to be transparent and get it out there in the open the way that it should always be from the very beginning, so I look forward to the challenge. Moving on, we have item four C is the adoption of the 2021-2022 strategic plan. This plan has been presented to council for review at the previous two workshops, and I believe staff has the final version here for your consideration, and hopefully for your final approval. And it does currently align with our projected capital improvements budget for next fiscal year, which is a critical, a critical juncture, and something that we have not been able to do for several years leading up to this, so that's a good change, that we're aligned there.
All right, well, I will ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? Everybody was there, we were all part of it. Seeing none, let's go ahead and take it to a vote. Vote is unanimous, so moved. Staff, tremendous job putting this together. It really reflected exactly what took place. Thank you.
Item four D is establishing the FY 2022 tentative millage rate and budget hearing dates, and we have Ms. Crystal Strickland here to introduce this item.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So before you, tonight, we are, I have an agenda item to adopt a tentative millage rate and to confirm the public hearing number one. Both of these items need to be presented and certified to our Okaloosa tax collector before August 4th, so that they can get the dates and the tentative millage rate on the trim notices that they send around to all of the residents. If we want to increase the tentative millage rate above what we're proposing this evening, then we, as the city, would incur the cost of notifying all of the residents by certified mail, so that, that's kind of expensive, so we prefer to get it right the first time. We can always reduce the millage rate at a later date if we want, we just, we can't increase it without, without notifying all of the citizens by the certified mail.
Hey, Crystal?
Yes?
On our meeting on Thursday, we were talking about the millage rate. We leave it the same. The perception, when it goes out to the public, it looks like it's an increase.
That's correct.
But it is not an increase, correct?
We're not increasing the millage rate, but technically, this is, this does constitute an increase in taxes. The rollback rate would be 1.5566 mils, so what we're proposing at 1.615 mils is 3.7, is a 3.75% tax increase. But it's because of the property value increase, not because the city is establishing this. The result would be an additional $608,000 that we would be able to adopt in our budget and to expend accordingly during fiscal year 2022. So I'm open to any questions before we move on, and also, I noticed a typo in the motion. When, in the agenda item that you have before you, the tentative millage rate, all of those figures are correct, and follow the attached D R 420 forms, but in the, in the recommended motion, the rollback rate is incorrect, 1.55. Correct, it's 1.5566 is the rollback rate.
And just, counsel, really quick, that is important, because in our recommended motion, we do need to specify what the rollback rate is, so...
I'll make that motion.
If you could just read the motion and substitute that new rollback rate in, so that we get that on the record. Yeah.
Yeah, and then I'll have Mr. Schmidt, you'll be up first. Let's go ahead and make the motion, get a second, and we'll go from there. All right, go ahead.
I move that council set the tentative millage rate for added valuetorum taxes at, Kyle, insert the right number. Oh, 1.6150 mils, which is more than the rollback rate of 1.556 mils, and confirm the date and times of the public hearings for the fiscal year 2022 budget on September 9th, 2021, at 5:30 PM, and September 20th, 2021, at 6:00 PM.
I have a motion?
Just real quick, before, before we get a second, it's 1.5566, so is that your motion, counsel?
Yes, that's my motion.
Missed a number. Six one thousandths. Yikes. Okay, so I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, sir. Crystal, can you, my mind's still on vacation, I don't think, maybe, and so we're not increasing the tax millage rate that will increase taxes on the citizens of Destin, or we are increasing the millage rate which increases taxes on the city of Destin residents?
We are not increasing the millage rate, this is the same millage rate that we've been at for a number of years, but effectively, we will be collecting more money from the citizens of Destin, 3.75% more than we collected last year.
Not due to increasing the millage rate, though?
Correct.
Okay, just, again, clear mind, and I, thank you so much.
It's based on the current property tax value, which a lot of us have seen in this last year, increase, right?
Correct, and as, as many of you know, you know, the property appraiser, they're set at a certain amount that they can increase the, the property values, the taxable values on all of our homes, thanks to the Home Said Exemption Act and, and other rulings thereafter. So most of the change in property values comes when the properties change hands, when they change ownership.
All right.
I'm sorry, I just have another one, because this is...
Go ahead.
The rollback rate of 1.5566 would allow us to collect the same dollar amount that we previously collected in the previous year.
That's correct. Taking in, the tax collector has a long formula, but, but essentially, yes.
So based upon property values increasing?
Correct.
If we kept it at that rate?
Right.
We're receiving the same amount of money?
Yes, so if we wanted to...
Oh, we're increasing it.
So we're effectively increasing the taxes on the citizens of Destin, just to be clear.
We are.
3.75%, we will collect 3.75% more than we did last year.
So when I asked if we're increasing taxes... First question was, are we increasing? Millage rate? Difference. Sure. Increasing millage rate increases our taxes that we get taxed, the money that they collect. So it was in... Okay, so ultimately, we are increasing the tax rate?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And the newspaper ad that we send, that we publish in the newspaper will say very clearly in big, bold letters that this is a tax increase.
Haven't we said at previous meeting that we were not planning on increasing? And this might be because I missed the budget meeting, so I apologize if this was discussed.
We said that we were not planning on increasing the millage rate, which is different. So if we could also increase the millage rate, which would increase the taxes further, so here, here's the essence of it, let me, let me boil it down for you. As you can imagine, 1 one thousandth of property value of, of $5 billion is less than, or, let's see, let's see, turn around. 1 one thousandth of property values of $6 billion is going to be more than 1 one thousandth of property values of $5 billion, right? So our property values have increased, they actually, let's see, the gross taxable value increased 6.98%, but we cannot apply the tax rate to the full amount, and we cannot, by Florida statute, budget more than 95% of what we are stating, the levy will be the levy will be. So our levy will be 3.75. If you put it in terms of like effective interest rate, or like on your, when you borrow money from the bank, you'll have a truth in lending notice. Maybe you are signing yourself up to borrow money at 3%, but your truth in lending might come back, and once they've added in all the closing costs, it's actually 3.125 or something, right? So that's kind of along the lines of this. They take into account the, the change in the dollar per capita that's coming into every home. Anyway, the formula's kind of complex, but it's all laid out very clearly on the attached DR 420 forms. We could walk through these forms if you'd like, but I know it's kind of.
Crystal, isn't it true also that we added, and correct me if the number is wrong, but I believe you told me $90 million in new construction in Destin?
That's correct.
That will be taxed, taxed this year that hasn't been in the past?
Correct.
So just to reiterate, our millage rate is the same, but our property values have gone up. They were all property values.
Yeah, last year, our property value, the taxable property value was $5.9 billion, and this year, we're at $6 billion.
Real, real quick, I think what Mr. Schmidt's trying to say is that we said we're not increasing the millage rate, but what we're saying is we're going from 1.5566.
No, we haven't been at 1.556 since, gosh, ever.
We've been at 1.6150.
We've been at 1.6150 for a number of years now. I think close to 10 years. Eight, I mean, it's somewhere between eight and 10 years. I don't have the, the whole history in front of me right this moment.
I got it now. The rollback is not last year's millage rate?
Correct.
That's, that's, that's all? Okay, thank you. Because rollback to me sounded like you were saying that was last year's millage rate, which I, that's why I'm just.
No, no. Yeah, the rollback rate would be.
Because we're increasing.
Yeah, the rates that we would charge if we wanted to collect the same number of dollars as last year. Yes.
Thank you.
Before we all get our brows furrowed, let's go ahead and take this to a vote.
This is what we're here for, to have public discussion so we can understand, so I feel good. So thank you very much for enjoying my humor.
The vote is unanimous, so moved. Sir?
Items 4E and 4F are the monthly status reports on our capital projects and our operations' financial status, and Ms. Strickland will handle those.
So first, we have the, the capital project status report, and staff is here to answer any questions. I think you're getting accustomed to seeing this report now. The bottom line is, of the $22.4 million that we budgeted for capital projects this year, we have expended $9.1 million, and we have currently encumbered $3.5 million in contracts out that are, that are open. So we have a balance of $9.7 million that is yet to be encumbered and accomplished. Are there any questions on the, the capital improvement project budget?
I don't see any, ma'am.
Onto the operating budget. I think you're becoming accustomed to seeing this one as well. We have the, the three primary funds, the general fund and the two CRAs. The general fund ending balance is still incredibly healthy, and if you skim all the way down to the very last page, you can see where I highlighted the most important figure, which is our unassigned fund balance. And our unassigned fund balance is projected to close out the year at $6.3 million, which is very healthy. And I'm here for any questions, if you have any.
Any questions? Today's your day. Thank you.
Item 4G is regarding low-speed vehicles, and Councilman Braden had asked that this be pulled off the table, brought back to council for discussion, and to see if we wanted to move forward with a vote or any changes in it.
And so basically, on this report, this portion of it, you were just seeking whether we want to move forward with an ordinance?
Sir, and any, and any changes? And we do have staff here, Mr. Zinguzzi and, and Mr. Burgess both could answer questions.
Okay. Does anyone here want to make a motion to start the discussion, or would you rather just do a question and answer with our staff? Would you like to make a motion, ma'am?
I, I would like clarity. So if we could get a summary of what's in place now, what was proposed, and where we stand.
So currently, we are just abiding by the state statute, which the county, unincorporated county also abides by. Most of this area is abiding by that. I know that that makes it easier for the sheriff's office to enforce if we're all consistent. However, I'm, I'm not taking sides on what we do next. I just wanted to make you aware of that.
I, I think, Dr. Ramswell, that in the original, when we first took up the ordinance, we had the, the area that where they could not travel, and there was a series, the green, it's on that chart, the green was recommended that would be in the ordinance if we develop an ordinance, to pass an ordinance, and then the rest would be, you know, permissible usage. So if, if you guys want to pass that ordinance, we can put that into our, our comp plan, and that's the way it'll be with, no one's allowed to use a slow-speed vehicle on Airport Road, that short portion of Main Street, right there at the access by, by City Hall, and all of 98, including the Mid Bay Bridge. And then there would be increased, added those green areas along Mountain Drive and some of those connecting roads. So if that's the route we want to take, I'll entertain an ordinance, or I mean, entertain a motion to, to have staff develop the ordinance, and then we can, we can smooth it over through the first or second reading.
So as of right now, the threshold is 35 miles an hour. So if the road is posted at 35 miles an hour or less, a properly licensed low-speed vehicle could, could use that roadway, except if it is a highway, a state, federal, or federal highway, such as 98 or.
No, sir. I saw your light on. Mr. Destin, would you like to comment? Mr. Braden?
Mayor, I think we need something in place that we can either add to or take away from, because right now, we have nothing. Is that, is that correct, staff?
Yeah, we don't have our own policy right now. We're just depending on the state statute.
Okay. I'd like to just go and make the motion to, to go with the, the map that is presented tonight.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Would it be more clarification if, if we made it?
Yeah, let me just clarify. There's a ordinance that's attached for discussion. I'm taking the motion as direction to staff to advertise that for first reading and bring it back to the council. Is that correct?
That would be the motion.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the motion, then. We have a second. Discussion. This is the time, if you want to hit staff up with any further questions, or we just wait until they bring us the ordinance back for first reading? Any, any discussion? Go ahead. Dr. Ramswell, and then I'll get you, Ms. Abert, and then Mr. Schmidt. Go ahead.
So as of now, are low-speed vehicles allowed on Airport? Yes, they are right now. Okay. I had that, somebody posted that question on my Facebook page, and I wasn't quite sure how to answer it. So, okay.
Ms. Abert.
And currently, the state statute says they should not be on 98, correct? If we create an ordinance, then we follow that up with a city mandate that they're not allowed on 98, correct?
We don't need to. We could, we can make it stricter, but we cannot make it less restrictive.
Well, I turned left on Main Street behind a golf cart yesterday, and I didn't understand why they were on 98. I thought that was.
Ooh.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, sir. I just, I feel like if we, if unincorporated Destin and other areas around us are one way, and they're following state statute, that we're going to create jurisdictional issues or, you know, violation. You know, if you're in Kelly Plantation, you want to head to Morgan Sports Center to watch your kid play soccer, you can't make it down Airport Road anymore. You can make it down Commons Drive, but then that's as far as you can go. It just, I just feel like it'll just create more confusion. And we already have a Florida statute that regulates this, and.
How much drive is it?
Well, I'm saying, they get to, they get to Airport. I'm sorry, yeah, not Morgan's, but you know, Dest Elementary, you know, just thread yale. I just, I just feel like we should, until there's a, you know, I know this has been discussed, but not really much analytical statistical data of why we're wanting to push an ordinance, and statute, Florida statute's regulating it right now. I'd like to just let that, let that be for now.
Well, I think the Okaloosa County Sheriff's Office even agreed that Airport Road wasn't a place for slow, for those type of vehicles on Airport. So that's four lane, and it's 35, but you know how fast people go. So I don't know. On that map, there's designated areas where they can cross 98 from Crystal Beach to get to the Commons and stuff like that. So there's provision. Right now, people just go where they want. So they're violating the law. It's just a matter of them getting caught. Okay, Mr. King?
Yeah, I just was, thank you, sir. The, my question was about, let's say somebody lives on, in Twin Lakes and, like the rest of us, know how to navigate back roads in a golf cart. Can they, who's to say that they, can they cross Airport Road, or does that handicap everybody south of Airport Road to get across and go use the back roads where golf carts are allowed?
You want to answer that, anybody? Any staff member answer that particular question? Can they cross Airport Road under the present map that there is?
I guess. Let me jump in real quick, just so we can clarify. And I guess I'm one of the old timers here, and I've, I've been around long enough to know that this map up here was back when we had a golf cart policy. We're now talking about low-speed vehicles. Those are two completely different animals. Low-speed vehicles are licensed by the state. They have to have turn signals, brake lights, windshield wipers, and the whole, the whole thing. So, yeah, at one point, this was proposed and adopted, but the green sections over there are irrelevant at this point because we have, we are using state statute. So those are all below 35 miles an hour, so they're all eligible for low-speed vehicle. We do not allow currently, and we could if we wanted to, but we do not allow golf carts to operate on public roadways right now in Destin. We could, but we don't. We don't have that policy in place.
Keep in mind that Commons is not a city road. That's why we see him on Commons.
And we have coordinated with the county, and they, they do enforce state, state statute for them too on Commons. You're right, absolutely.
Mr. Braden?
Thank you, Mayor. My only thought is, is the sheriff's office has expressed concern, and we all know Airport Road, and I mean, the, the airport can't even fence up down there because people's crashing on it, you know, around that curve. And I, I just think, I would really like to be a little more proactive instead of wait until a cart full of kids gets killed out there and it's, well, well, maybe we ought to do something now. And it really probably wouldn't be a problem if, you know, the golf carts were doing, you know, some of them was doing 27, 28 mile an hour, I think, because it's about the fastest, some of them go that I've seen. But I was behind one the other day on Airport Road doing about 18, 18 mile an hour, and he was going as fast as he could go. So when you have this, that's what you get. You get golf carts that'll do, you know, maybe 30 mile an hour, and then you got golf carts that's going to do about 12 mile an hour down Airport Road. So, and that just, to me, that's just not a place for a golf cart going, you know, 12, 15, 18 miles an hour down through there, people crashing on the curve. I mean, it's, it's almost like bloody 98. So that was my only thought. It's, but it's, it's whatever the council wants to do. Thank you.
Dr. Ramswell.
I, I don't even remember what I was going to ask, so move on.
All right, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say, and we've had this discussion for at least four years, you know, and I've seen this map. I know this map really well by now. And we can't, it always seems to come back and go back to LPA, and then the people in LPA complain because they've seen it six or seven times. I would just say that the city of Destin is not a safe place for cars, you know, and so, and, and, and I've said this before, Airport Road's not a safe place for any vehicle. Certainly not 98, but I, you know, I think, what Rodney said in terms of being proactive about, I mean, it's just a public safety issue. And it really is, and it's glaring when you're on Airport Road and you see a low-speed vehicle. It just looks like it doesn't belong, and that's for a reason. And, and so you'd hate to have a terrible accident and then start working your way backwards and trying to make it safer when we know it's not safe in the first place. I don't care what state statute says. State statute doesn't know what Airport Road in Destin is like in the summer, and it's awful. And also, you know, and, and the other thing about empirical data and whatnot, you don't need empirical data. Just a small town, we know how dangerous our roads are. So I think, you know, in the future, the most restrictive policy towards golf carts and low-speed vehicles would probably be the best course of action.
Abert.
Thank you, Mayor. Ditto what Mr. Morgan just said. I think that just golf carts in general, I mean, it's great when they're in the neighborhood. It's great when they're right over there in Crystal Beach, you know, when they're going from one condo to another. But Destin has trifold in the amount of traffic and the amount of drivers, and drivers haven't gotten better at driving. And I agree, we need to limit low-speed vehicles, golf carts, anything that can't go over 30 miles an hour as a total hole, everybody.
Thank you. One more thought.
You get the last, you get the last word, because I'm going to take this to a vote.
All right, just one more thought. I was sitting.
Well, I didn't see the, gotta press the thing.
Oh, I pressed it three times already.
Well, your light doesn't work.
You got trouble with the whole thing.
Just spitball and just throw it at me. Go ahead.
One more, one more short thought. If we have something in place like this, then it's, it's easier to tweak it. And if it gets word, this is a multimodal city, you know, then we can, we can pull it at any time and let them go down Airport Road. So it's, it's something we can work with. That's all. Thank you.
All right, before I let you speak, City Manager, Mr. Destin has been patiently waiting to speak. Sorry, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. And I agree with the dangerous situation we have on Airport Road. However, why, why don't we do something really truly inventive? Let's try to address the excessive speed. I got behind a low-speed vehicle, which by state law is required to be able to go 35 miles an hour three days ago, because I saw one on Airport Road for once. And so I pulled in behind him, and, and we proceeded down at 35 right on the nose. And we had cars swerving around us, giving us the middle finger salute, acting in a totally reckless behavior because he and I were going 35 miles an hour. What we need to do is lower the speed limit on Airport Road to 25. Then people would do 35. And we need to put some, some slow, some, some ways, whether they be raised pedestrian walkways or speed bumps. I love the idea that we're going to fix the curve by putting asphalt that grips your tires better. That'll just allow them to go around faster. There have been three people killed on Airport Road within my memory, not a one on a low-speed vehicle, all on bicycles. If we're going to really stop people from getting killed on Airport Road, we should ban bicycles along with low speed. The whole, and, and that's all said in, you know, in joke, in jest, what we need to do is lower the speed limit. You've got every traffic problem on Airport that's out on Highway 98 right now. People going 50. And we're not going to fix it by banning low-speed vehicles. We need to lower the speed limit and slow the traffic down. There's one other aspect, as, as we talked about, our multimodal comp plan elements. Lowering or prohibiting low-speed vehicles on streets in Destin may well run afoul and violate that very comp plan, because by definition, they are not cars, they're low-speed vehicles. We need to have a review done to see if that in fact would violate our comp plan multimodal element. So I'd like to fix the really problem that we have on Airport and not just ban cars as a knee-jerk. as a knee jerk, easy way that, oh yeah, we addressed it. Then we're going to kill three or four more people on bicycles over the next 10 years or walking or just in crashes. So, that's my feeling on this subject.
Mr. City Manager?
Just, listen. I'm sorry, I thought that Kimberly wanted to say something, but I don't think she does anymore. Thank you.
I, I do want to move forward, but just for clarification for staff, if this motion passes and for Rodney that made the motion, is there going to be edits made to the current ordinance or is this exact ordinance as it is here going straight back to LPA as is? Because it's not just Airport Road on this ordinance. I just want to make sure you see that.
Just to clarify, I believe, I believe that the LPA has already passed this ordinance and so it had come, yeah, a while ago. So, it had come to council on first reading. It was tabled, brought off the table here. So, it does not need to go back to LPA. If you would prefer to send it back to LPA, you can of course do that. But I don't believe, judging from Rodney's vehement head shaking, that is not his motion.
All right, just so we don't wear ourselves out, let's, let's just vote on this.
Mayor, I did have a quick question.
Go ahead.
To help. Um, and I think this is probably geared to Mr. Zenguzi. At one point, and I don't remember which project it was, there was talk of them improving that right of way road into a road that would actually connect east, west, down with Airport. Has there, do you know which project I'm talking about and is that really going to be happening? Because that would be an alternate route ultimately that to Airport. Yeah, it was like over the power line, under the power line and it would connect to the park behind that new apartment building by Target.
Yeah, that, that's, that type project's still, uh, in review. So, we're nowhere near that, uh, connection yet.
Okay, thank you.
All right, without further ado, we have a motion. We have a second. Eyes have it, so moved.
So, we will bring that back on first reading.
Yes.
Next item is regulation relating to electric bicycles.
I'll just address this real quick. This is a pretty simple, really. Electric bikes are treated the same as traditional bikes under the law right now according to a 2020 amendment to Florida statutes, chapter 316. But the statute does specifically allow you guys and it gives you broad discretion to exercise regulations over electric bikes. So, if you'd like to do something like that, uh, please just give staff sufficient information to craft an ordinance and they can bring it to LPA and go through the normal processes.
That's a good sign, nobody's saying anything. So, nobody wants to do anything. So, let's just let it drop.
All right. Item 4I is an update on the proposed building integrity reports post certificate of occupancy by Mr. Zenguzi and his staff.
Good evening, Council. At this time, um, staff has taken in consideration your request. And, um, so we are currently doing some extensive research so we can nail down exactly what we can bring back to you at the next, um, meeting in August. So, right now, it's just still, gee, digging it in and seeing what we can find out.
Any questions? Nope, just, you'll present us a full presentation once you get your data collected, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
We'll have that to you with, um, some, um, proposed, um, um, ordinances that you can, um, weigh in on.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? Ain't none? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Um, item J is, uh, staff is wishing for council's approval of an always stop, stop signs at Regatta Bay Road, also known as Dolphin Street at that point, and Woodwind slash Wind Star Drive. Um, these have been requests from the public that we take action at this location. And we have Mr. Zenguzi again and his staff to bring this item forward.
I don't have that Jeopardy music at this point. Okay, go ahead, Don.
I can go ahead and make the motion. My apologies, Mayor, Council. Uh, so, we did receive some concerns from local residents in regards specifically to multimodal, uh, safety at this intersection. So, it is a, uh, it is in the Crystal Beach planning area. It is primary residential and we did observe vehicles, pedestrian and cyclist traffic in the area. Regatta Bay is identified as a minor collector street that connects neighborhoods Ascenic 98 and US 98. So, uh, one of the things that I just want to take a minute and not prolong this, but is a very unique intersection. It may be the only one like it in Destin. And when I went out to view the intersection, what occurs is that a large portion of the vehicles that approach this intersection actually stop, even though there's no stop sign on Regatta Bay. So, the, it is the uniqueness of the intersection. I think that in conjunction with the stop here for pedestrian signs that when folks pull up, they actually stop instead of proceeding through the intersection. As, during, during viewing of the intersection, it's, it's a bit confusing. Uh, I myself even have a tendency to stop. I, I don't feel comfortable driving through this intersection. So, after viewing it and looking at it, I, I feel like that, or we feel like that due to the inconsistent driver behavior, so some stop and some don't, that as a, a multimodal user, you really don't quite know what to do, of course, which is make sure they see you and stop each time. But, uh...
Mr. Smith, you said that the residents have come to you and basically asked for this. Well, can I just make the motion so that we can discuss it, which I think we'll probably agree with the citizens that are in there?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, well, I'll make that, um, I recommend move that City Council direct City Manager to implement an all way stop sign at the intersection of Regatta Bay Road, Dolphin Street and Woodward slash Wind Star Drives.
I have a motion, I have a second. And, um, Kevin?
Yeah, sure. I just, um, I, I, um, happy that whoever initiated this to go out there and pursue this, I'm happy to see it happen because I know for almost five years at previous boards and committees, it's been, uh, very requested multiple times. So, I'm, I'm excited to see, uh, that happening for safety, safety standpoint. So, thank you. And, um, I know Mr. Bagby mentioned another area and if that's something that, um, needs to be looked at or something, I would, I would encourage us to make sure we're looking at that one too. But I'm definitely supportive of this. Thank you.
Uh, Don, in your report too, you had an estimate of cost. And what was that?
$2,500.
Ramswell?
So, just out of curiosity, when would we put a yield as opposed to a stop?
Typically speaking, in this case, since there's a stop here for pedestrian signs, state law, although it is a yield condition if there's not a vehi, you know, not a pedestrian there. Typically speaking though, I'm trying to think of a condition where that you would put a yield at a intersection. The only ones I can think of are off the top of my head is when like you have a right turn lane or a right, you know, ramp where the, the right don't go through the intersection and there's an island. I'm not aware of the use of yield signs at intersections as a, as a whole unless you all can think of one. I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend one.
Don, this is currently a two-way stop, right?
Yeah, correct. That is, yes, sir. So, you currently stop on the side streets and then you can drive through on the main line.
Just bringing it up and asking the question.
All right. Okay, well, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further questions for staff? Seeing none? Thank you, Don. The vote is unanimous, so moved. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Item K is, uh, staff looking for council's approval of the crosstown connector multimodal options. And we have staff and I believe we have a member of our design team here too to help answer questions.
All right, well, I entertain a motion at this point. Start the discussion process.
I'll move that we adopt, uh, option number one.
I have a motion and I have a second. Um, Mr. Motion Maker, would you have any questions for staff? Nope. How about anyone else?
I have questions.
Go ahead, Dr. Ramswell.
But, I mean, we are going to have this discussion, correct?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, well, I can wait until we have the discussion. Because I was leaning more towards option number two, but I'd like to hear why folks are leaning towards one.
All right. Mr. Destin?
I've leaned toward that because it has a smaller footprint of the right of way and I think that's the proper direction to go.
All right. Anyone else?
I think the small trees and shrubs is going to be a lot easier to manage than a large set of trees.
I, I was completely against the median, uh, last meeting, but I didn't want to be the grain against the sand that night. So, this, this is a little bit smaller than median. So, yeah, that's why I was going for it tonight.
See, I was going in complete opposite, thinking one day we'd have beautiful oak trees overhanging the road on either side and it'd be a beautiful covered road. But, I hate, that's what, why, why we're discussing all this. So, thanks.
Mr. Brayden?
Yeah, I too. When we discussed this last time, I noticed when I was driving down here in front of Home Depot, it's got the median, it's a big oak trees in the middle of the median, it's got the canopy. I thought, man, it just looks nice. And this looks like something down, going down Legion Drive or, or maybe Main Street. Which was leaning towards option two.
I think once those trees get aged, they'll still be, because it's only a two lane right of way. I think once, once you get into that 15th year on these live oaks, you'll get a pretty good little canopy. I got one in my front yard that was this big around when we built it in 1982 and now you can't reach around it. And it's, it spreads all over the yard. So, I think, I think we'll still get a fair amount of canopy over time, just by the nature of the width of the right of way.
And the root system is a little bit better on a smaller tree for a road ultimately.
Well, doesn't it also look like option one gives you more width on the planting strip to have a full canopy on the side and the middle? Because the option one shows a 12-foot planting strip on the sides versus option two, which is variable planting strip. So, I, I imagine that's also beneficial on the sides at least. The, the middle median is smaller on option one, but the sides are bigger unless I'm misinterpreting that, Don. You're looking at me like I'm...
No, sir. No, good, no, good obser, no, sir. Good observation. And, but actually the, when I say variable, so that will be with either option on the outside. So, depending on how far away from the street the actual multi-use path is, that's what we meant by variable. It'll be that way on both of them. So, as you get close to the intersection, the sidewalk will have to come in and so that way it'll come down maybe almost to zero at the intersection. And then as we go out into the park, it'll grow. So, actually, both options are variable on the outside buffer between the street and the multi-use.
And it would be more uniformity at that weight too, right?
Uh, yeah, yeah, as far as trees, yeah, making sure that that's there. So, you know, we can, the, the sidewalk or the multi-use may vary farther, but we could put the trees the same distance apart. So, we could say the trees, you know, to be safe, we'll say, uh, 12 feet off the roadway and then they would all be even as you went along.
Real quick, are there people that love crepe myrtles?
No.
I hate them. I hate a crepe myrtle.
They throw some trash.
What does it say?
Senator, this is a confession. If we plant more crepe myrtles in this city, I will cut them down. Sorry, sir. But you, you can take me in. I will, I will pay for it.
See, I was the one that used to get blasted for liking palm trees.
Lance, you do have, you're up there, so weigh in.
Thank you. I just had a question for Don. Um, Don, could you explain the recent changes in, from DOT as far as the types of trees and how close the trees can be planted to the roadway? I know that's changed. Um, the big oaks are not always allowed anymore in, in medians. And I don't remember the distances that y'all talked to me about, but, so, I know we're talking about big canopies, so I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
So, I'm not aware of any changes, but Jessica, you correct me if I'm wrong. We're allowed to have with, when we have a curb, we're allowed to have a tree within four feet of the travel lane? Is that correct?
With the big oaks, you're having to assume, you know, over time, they're going to get... So, yes, technically you can have them within four feet of the curb. You've got to assume that tree's going to grow over time. So, you've got to account for that. When you're thinking oaks, I mean, you know, like you said, they get, you can't wrap your arms around them. Now, we did run this through, I'm not a landscape architect, but we did run this through our landscape architect and they said the option where we've got 18 foot of clear space would be adequate for an oak tree, they wouldn't be comfortable going smaller.
Just, just one more comment too. So, all of the park elements are not included in this, which includes the landscaping. So, we will have the place for it, but we won't have any, what we plant. We will be back though before we plant anything. So, we won't, uh, be planting any crepe myrtles without coming to talk to the council first. Councilman Morgan?
I won't be on the council, but I will be here.
I'll be in the neighborhood, ready to cut them down.
All righty then, okay, without...
I have a question about numbers.
Go ahead.
So, in the, uh, design options that are in the PowerPoint, design option number one shows a 12-foot median with a 40-foot right of way. When you go to option two, it says a 22-foot median with a 40-foot right of way, but then the text says a 50-foot. If we're increasing the median by 10 feet, wouldn't the right of way then decrease? And it should be 30, not 40 or 50?
There may be an error there. So, if you, 12 feet plus the two 11-foot lanes, 12 and 22 is 34, plus the curb and gutter, which is eight, which is about 42 feet. And then if you do add 10 foot to the median, that'd be about 52 feet. So, those numbers are approximate and they'll change a little bit based on the intersection and some other design considerations, but they'll be really close. So, the option one with the 12-foot median is 40 feet. And then option two with the 20-foot median, 22-foot median is 50 feet right of way.
So, right of way increases as the median increases?
Correct.
Okay, see, I was going the other direction, thinking increased median, less right of way here.
That is correct. So, as the median grows, the right of way, or the, what we consider roadway right of way would grow.
I know, just...
Go ahead.
Why is it, why is it less expensive if we're increasing the right of way, please?
Because to a degree, when we're saying you're increasing the right of way, it's arbitrary. It's not impacting additional parcels. It's not changing your construction work at all. It's just if you're considering the back of the curb where you want your roadway right of way to be, if those curbs are further out, right of way's going to be bigger, you know, and smaller. So, that answered your question?
All right. We got a motion, we got a second. Let's vote on it, up or down, and then we'll go from there. The eyes have it, so moved. Thank you very much. Thank you, Don. Thank you, staff.
Couple of quick announcements, sir. Um, number one is the special election for the vacant Destin City Council seat will be held tomorrow, Tuesday, July the 20th, right here in this room and at the community center from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. All right. Uh, number two is we have a potential budget workshop. Number three is tentatively scheduled on August the 9th at 5:30 PM right here in the council chambers if council decides to have staff move forward with it. So, you can just put that on your calendar tentatively. And finally, Compass can be accessed from the city's website if you would like to research the current status of any... if you would like to research the current status of any new items that have been in the system. So that's for both council and the public watching. And you can access new applications on our Compass program.
Hey Lance?
Yes, please.
Webb was very kind to give me about a 90-second. It felt like it was very quick and very precise. Would you please show how to click on those, where you go to make a report? Or if you want to go to see if someone's got a certificate approval to build or flatten? Can you do a real quick onsite?
Thank you, yes, I'd be happy to. As everyone knows, we did recently launch our new Compass system. In order to launch the Compass system from our website, you can just simply go to cityofdestin.com/compass. And if you go there, you'll see it bring up this page. And if you do search "public records", you can actually search for an address where you may have a question about a code case or you may have a question about a building permit or whatnot. So in this situation, I'm actually going to use City Hall's. So if you notice, the system is very intuitive and very intelligent. As you type in the address, it actually brings up Indian Bayou Trail, 4200 Indian Bayou Trail. I click on it. And it'll take a second just to bring this up. But it will retrieve, if you notice here on this, you can see all the different things that we have on 4200 Indian Bayou Trail. No, we don't have actually 1,574 code cases on City Hall. That is actually just unassigned addresses. That's what our code officers will put it to. But you can see all the different cases associated with the parcel, permits, inspections and whatnot. This is a very summarized view, but if you have a question of what's going on right now in a parcel, please go there. In addition, if you don't find what you want there, our City Help Desk, which can be found on our front page, you can go there and submit questions. And it'll be auto routed to our departments. We're happy to answer that. Please send those in. It is manned from 8 to 5, but we do monitor it as best we can and get the answer back to you guys as quickly as possible.
Can you go back to the page for City Council, for City Hall that shows to report a problem? Like if someone is upset about someone's garbage cans or boats in their front yard, instead of calling council members, they can go right to that?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. You can actually do it from the Compass system. If you go down to the bottom, you'll see the link to City Help Desk. But also on the front page of cityofdestin.com, it's also there called City Help Desk. Ask a question, report a problem. It's all right there. They all go to the same...
But there's a tile that you click on. You showed it to me.
Yeah, I'd be happy to show you that. If we go back to our front page of cityofdestin.com, there's multiple ways to access this link. If you go right here to the, it says, "Report a Problem", "Report a Problem" or "Let Us Know". And if you click on that, it goes right to the City Help Desk. Again, multiple ways to access from our website. This is the automated way for us to be able to track problems. We watch this from the city manager's office. And this is the best way to route those. And we'll get those answers to you as quickly as possible.
And if people put in their email address of who's filing the complaint, they get an automatic reply that you've cited that person, correct?
Yes, ma'am. The goal of this system is to have a trackable ticket system. So when you submit that, you get a ticket number. And as our staff updates the case, you'll get an update. And then when we close it, you actually get an update that it says it's closed and for the reason it's closed. Thank you.
Are you looking for less phone calls, ma'am?
No, I just wanted to commend the work and time and money and effort that our phenomenal staff spent months getting this up and running. And now it's there to be used by our citizens, correct?
Everybody was shaking their head yes for those that are on the line.
Mayor, let me ask just one question.
Go ahead, sir.
On that tile where you report, do you report anonymously or do you have to put your name in?
If it's a code compliance-related complaint, then if you want that to move forward, you do have to acknowledge your name in a way to contact you. If it's other complaints, you do not.
I was wondering, I saw some new legislation passed by the state of Florida that addressed that very issue. We're compliant with that legislation, huh?
That's right.
Okay, thanks.
And we are in the process of updating that verbiage on the website to make that clear to all our customers.
Thanks, sir.
That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
All righty then. Up next, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, actually, I think we might need to pull 6B because I'm not sure that I can vote on it. I think I might need to abstain.
Councilmember Ramswell, you probably don't technically have a voting conflict, but this is one of those where you might have an appearance of impropriety. So I do think that would probably be wise.
Okay, so, all right, yeah, because you got to vote on consent agenda items.
I'll vote, I'll make a motion to move consent agenda 6A and 6C.
I got a motion, you got a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Ayes have it, so moved. So let's deal with item 6B.
Make a motion to approve item 6B.
I have a motion and a second.
And for the record, I am abstaining because I serve as president of Destin High School, Inc.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Any comments?
That's a pretty awesome job.
Seeing no comments? We have a motion, we have a second, we'll take a vote. Okay. It worked. The vote is unanimous with one abstained by Dr. Ramswell. For the public record. All righty then, moving on. Mr. Brayden?
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Dr. Ramswell, it looks like you've got some Florida League of Cities items for us to consider.
Yes, I have one that I was asked to put on here. At the annual conference for the Florida League of Cities, we typically have a voting delegate. If the mayor attends, then it's the mayor. If it's not the mayor, it's whomever would be in attendance. So I will be in attendance at the conference. And so it was suggested that we formally name me as the voting delegate.
I'll entertain a motion, okay? We have a motion? We have a second? Any further discussion? Around here, if you volunteer, tag. Here we go, everyone. Ayes have it, so moved.
Thank you. Next up is the Destin High School path right-of-way. And I've been working with Mr. Zenguzey on this. And I think, did we decide we're going to hold off until there's a little bit more information?
Yeah, correct, councilmember. Just for the record, for everybody else, Councilmember Ramswell asked us to take a look at the potential opportunities for students that live in the Indian Bayou subdivision to walk to school, to have that potential opportunity to do that. And so we looked at various options for her. I believe she went to her board school, and they chose one route. And so we are researching on our best to get that accomplished. There'll be some easements that need to be acquired. So there'll be a corporate development between us and the county. And so that's what we're currently doing. And we'll come back to you with a specific course of action.
I know it sounds kind of crazy to be looking at a right-of-way path from Indian Bayou, which is so close, but the reason being, the way Indian Bayou subdivision is located, the east side of it is almost directly behind the high school. So those students, I mean, if there was a path, they could just cut straight south essentially. Now, as it is, they have to go all the way to the front of the neighborhood, back around out to Commons and back. So that's why we're looking at this.
Yeah, it'd be a lot nicer for them not to have to walk along Commons Drive.
And then third thing up is the Dress Up Destin, which is just the silly name I have up for it right now. But Louis and I again have been working on this project. And I know I've received input from a couple of different folks on different ideas. We do have a commitment from Home Depot to provide supplies. We're also looking at different ways we can make this move forward, who's going to manage it. And so we're putting together all those different pieces.
I was going to add, Dr. Ramswell, I saw this. And I was out of town last week and passengers in my vehicle spotted this box on the corner. And it was beautifully decorated. They did, passengers in my vehicle. Anyways, it was a utility box that was decorated. But the cool thing about it that I'll share, and you can take this into consideration or staff, is that it wasn't painted. It was, I would say, either wrapped or sticker. And I'm not an artist, but there might be benefits of, when it comes time, if we can do this, to look at, rather than painting, wrapping them with material or something like that. It was cool looking.
Yeah, I mean, we see cars now doing that.
Yeah. You can change it out more often if it fades or, you know, whatever. Maybe it's easier to do. So just, I like this project and I hope it continues to move forward. So thank you.
Thank you for weighing in. And that's something maybe we can look at and see if it's a different route to go or another option as we move forward, but...
Real quick, I had somebody, actually, I had a couple of people bring this to my attention. They were here during the meeting where you brought it up. And they were a little bit concerned with the, well, you know, if we give people just the free rein to do whatever they want, you know what I mean? It's like, what if it's not, what if it doesn't look good?
Right, no, no, no. No, absolutely, that. And I mean, obviously, you want to make sure there are no vulgarities or anything rated R or whatever on a box. And so that's something we've been discussing as well, the parameters. And we'll probably have people submit an original design of what they intend to paint and that sort of a thing. But yeah, clearly a really good point. And that, I believe, is everything I have for tonight. So thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Destin?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask a question about the pedestrian crosswalk that connects our new sidewalk along Zerby over to Calhoun. So far, I'm not sure what's going there. I think we need to put in a pedestrian walkway like we have out on Crystal Beach along Old 98, which is slightly raised with a little different materials with the signs. And people tend to slow down there because there are a lot of people using that already. They're going down that nice sidewalk we built from those parking lots. And we need to make sure they can pass safely. And while we have slowed traffic down from the north on Calhoun with those speed bumps, they're still making a pretty good clip coming off 98. So if we put one of the Crystal Beach-style pedestrian crosses there, that would help the problem quite a lot. And so I would suggest that we ask the city manager to make that happen. I'm making the form of a motion.
Thanks, sir, I got a motion. Got a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Can I get a little clarification on where exactly?
I'm sorry?
Right there, the crossing at the corner of Zerby and Calhoun, across towards Leonard Destin Park.
Right, where they're going straight across from Zerby over to Calhoun.
Okay, just for a little information, we had our walkthrough of substantial completion today at 1:30. And we came up with a punch list for the contractor to do. You probably noticed some of the thermoplastics they put down was kind of sloppily done. We're going to have them completely redo that. That's unacceptable. There are about a half dozen to 10 things that they're going to have to do as well. But I can, I'm in regular contact with the contractor. If they can't do it because they were planning to get out of here on Friday, they're going to be installing in addition those rapid flashing beacons at three crossings at Clement Taylor Park, that one that you're talking about right there, and the one that leads over to our paid parking lot over on Cybert. Those were the three locations.
If, that's great, but if we raise that slightly, not like the speed bump at all, but I noticed the ones on, out on Crystal Beach on 98, when they're raised a little, they are much more effective.
Okay, we're going to be having our continuing services asphalt contractor do some other work in that area. We may just tack that on. If it's okay with the city manager.
Yep, I'm voting. I hit the button before the question was asked. Ayes have it, so moved. You got it, Lance? Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Mayor. After five years, it looks like we're finally on track for a sub-two-hour meeting. So congrats to everybody and fingers crossed for the die sound there. I'm honored, y'all selected me to serve with you for a couple of meetings. Good luck to the candidates tomorrow. Thank you to the city staff. I think all of y'all do a wonderful job and serve our community well. And for everyone up here, I really admire all y'all do because it's not an easy job. You don't get paid for it. It's important work. We take a lot of crap, but I'd do it all again in a heartbeat because, you know, I'm proud of the stuff we got done together. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Thank you, Mayor. As the city of Destin's representative for the TDC, I was sent an email from the inspector general. The Okaloosa County Inspector General is currently conducting a routine audit of the Okaloosa County Tourist Development Department. As part of our planning process, we're reviewing the tourist development council's role in relation to the TDD. As a member of the council, these were the questions they asked me, these two questions, which I find ironic that it came in on the 13th of July, right in the middle of what we're already dealing with. The first question, "Do you feel that the council has an appropriate level of oversight over the TDD?" And secondly, "Are you aware of any issues or do you have any concerns related to the TDD's operations or use of financial resources?" So as your representative, I wrote back and said, "I would like to talk to my council members and my city attorneys and find out their thoughts before I return with an answer." So this is going back to the inspector general. And I would really appreciate each of you weighing in on your thoughts of what's the appropriate answer here? Mayor, you want to start?
Yeah, that question sounds like it's geared more towards your committee, your council, not the commissioners. From a participant on the tourist development council, I think that's, they want to hear that perspective. So I would stay focused on, from your experience, how do you think your council's handling its processes, its expenditures of the funds? Because all you guys do is make recommendations to the VOCC. So I think they're geared towards, they want to see how you feel about how the TDC council process is working and the care that it's given to the tax monies.
And to the resources.
And to the resources.
Ms. Kop, are you on the line still?
Yes.
Can you please weigh in as I did send this to you for your legal guidance?
Yeah. Extend regarding to your position on that committee, however, I think it's appropriate for you to ask council if they don't... You know, you can answer yourself with the help. If they want to weigh in.
You're cutting out, Kim.
Oh, really? Hold on, let me fix that. Is this better?
Lots.
Is this better?
Now I can hear you.
Okay, I was just saying that to an extent, I agree that it's with respect to your position on the committee. But I also think that if you want to ask the council to weigh in and offer their opinions, they're welcome to if they would like to do so. And if they don't have anything to add, then, you know, the lawyers for the city can work with you to answer your questions and help you with the response. But I don't have a problem with the city council weighing in.
All right, with that, can I ask each of you your thoughts? We're starting with you, Rodney.
I don't have any of this time. I think I'd just go with the attorney's advice. Thank you.
I mean, I think we could all come up with quite a few sentences, if not paragraphs, on how to respond. But what is it? The first question specifically is saying how, can you read it again?
Yes, it's, "Do you feel the council has an appropriate level of oversight over the TDD? And are you aware of any issues or do you have any concerns related to the TDD's operations or use of financial resources?"
Yeah, I mean, the way I would answer is looking from the outside in. So it's a tough call. I mean, obviously, I'd like to see a different composition and I'd like to see different distribution and multiple things along that line. But that's, I don't think what they're asking for maybe.
Mr. Destin?
Well, obviously, I'm a little bit disappointed in the manner in which the county operates. It's quite apparent from their reaction that the council was not in the loop on this expansion of the TD area at all. Matter of fact, they seem to be as shocked as we were when it was... as we were when it was presented to them, which tends to make you think that they're not having much of a role supervisory in nature, or even being paid much attention to when it comes to recommending. So that part, I would have to say is pretty disappointing. But that's not being created by them, that's being created by the folks up above them. As far as the money, you know, another thing, they can make recommendations. I really have not looked at it close enough to know whether those recommendations are carrying any weight at all. I have, just, just from an outside looking in, probably not. But once again, that's the role of their overseers and not theirs.
You know, what's interesting is I was reading through a bunch of different statistics on TDCs around the state, and a lot of them are separate entities. They aren't part of the county. And I'm wondering if this is sort of a gauge of that level of inter, interactivity, or I don't know, but it's an interesting thought.
Johnny, Mr. King, do you have any way in? Or did you want to weigh in?
I'd say we, you know, we nominated you as the, as the representative of the TDC and more or less echo what, echo what Mr. Destin has to say.
Thank you. I didn't mean to skip you, Mr. Morgan.
I mean, if you would have asked me three or four years ago, when trouble was talking about leaving the county, I had some issues with the way that money was spent then. It was pretty horrendous, but I like the, you know, direction the TDC has gone in. I just hate where it's heading in the past two months. That makes me certainly worried.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, ma'am. Um, well, I, I would say, you feel free to take the opportunity to share as much information as you want about your personal thoughts and feelings towards whatever you think is going on, whether it's answering the question correctly or not, and however they want to take the information that you send them, it's up to them. So if you feel led to tell them about some of the current contentious issues we have going on right now, I mean, nothing wrong with putting it down on the, on the email. Spending money, yeah, and they've been very nice to us, giving us a lot of money that we earn and, and share with the whole county. So they've been nice to approve a lot of money back to us. I'm, I'm happy that they share that with, they share the money that we're mostly generating, so that's nice of them. But that's just my, you know, so yes, spending money, that's, that's, they're doing good, but feel free to share other issues if you, if, you know, nobody's going to penalize you for saying something, you know, there's not a wrong answer, I don't think. So, but yeah, that's my thoughts.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor?
I, I follow the TDC, the council, and I know most of the people on it. As a representative of the Florida Restaurant and Lodging Association, I think they do a really good job, and I think the questions are directed to you as a member of the council, in how you guys operate. I think that you've done a great job setting the budget, putting priorities, making, because all you guys do is, is, is set policy and, and send it to the county commissioners to vote it up or down, you know, including your budgetary process. So I would just share your experiences as a council member with that council. I think that's what they're asking for. They just want individual council members to let them know what you think about your, your council that you sit on. And, and I know most all those people, and you included, and I think the TDC council-wise is in really good hands, and Destin's very well represented on that council. We have, the majority of the people on that council right now have Destin's interests at heart.
Thank you. And Mayor, the other, the other question I have, and I talked to Joey about this earlier. This past weekend, I had a couple of delivery operators reach out and ask me, "When were they going to get their certificates?" So I sent an email to the city, to Lance, who works for us, and asked him to ask his staff, "What's the update on who has what certificates? How many people are still outstanding?" I got a list back on Saturday night on who was still outstanding and those that were approved and had their certificates, and then I still had problems with those people that said, "I don't have a certificate. I don't know why they're saying I do." So as of tonight, I think, Joey, you have the final information, so there's only like, maybe, what, six people now that physically are approved but don't have a certificate that can get it tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am. There's going to be a total of, you've got 19 liveries, there's eight livery vessels that haven't gone through the complete process and have been issued their certificates and registrations. They paid. There's three liveries that have received their letter of approval. Now they have to pay, then we give them their stickers, and they get their certificate. Then we have to do another inspection to make sure that, you know, they put it on the correct side of the boat. And then there's eight liveries still under enforcement, but they are working towards compliance with the officer.
The only complaint that I had from some of them was the letter didn't come out until this weekend, that, and they wanted to know, why was it on a weekend that they got a letter? I said, "Well, the point is, is we're trying to get this done, and I just need to make sure that everybody knows what the process is, and now that you've got, this Compass Gov is up, you've got this, everything is online, right?"
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We're working through it to get everything. We're going to have to manually upload the ones that we received prior to, so we're in that process too.
And then, my last question, the Clement Taylor Park, and it's kind of like two questions, okay? When I was the, the chair of the Parks and Recreation, we got like a $750,000 grant, right, Lance? And so the money that was awarded for the Clement Taylor Park, I've been asked by several residents, where is the money going, because the park is still not done, and how much is being spent, and are we spending money on other parks with the money we got for Clement Taylor? So can you address that?
Absolutely. That is an ORAC grant. It's the same grant that we are currently using to build Captain Royal Melvin Heritage Park. The reason why the work is not done is because we have not received final authorization from Treasury yet, and the, the county is the recipient of the funds, we're a sub-recipient. So as soon as the county gets the word that the Treasury has officially approved, given their final approval, then they will notify us that we can move forward and we can start the renovation project. So no, that money is not being spent on any other park. It will be spent on, on Clement Taylor Park.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Nothing tonight, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, sir. Just to follow up on that quick question, are we able to, are we able to check with ORAC people to see where we stand, where the county stands with getting that grant?
Jeff is our grants and projects manager, and he's, he is in contact with the county's project manager on this weekly, because I would like to get this thing moving. For, and I think I've said this multiple times, so I'm sorry if I'm repeating myself, but we have deferred maintenance on that park for years, and to the point where we're having to shut down portions of the playground area. So we, we want that to happen as fast as possible, so...
So Jeff's been in touch with the county person about this specific grant at this park?
Yes.
Gotcha. Cool. I, I had a common acquaintance present an option to city manager and finance director about a cost savings program that their company looks at budgets and expenses and sees if they can possibly save people money. And there's, there was, there was a couple of meetings, and I'm going to ask if, at the next meeting, they could possibly bring forth their, you know, advice or their opinion and, and possibly give some more information on it. I didn't know if we could add that to next meeting's agenda, just to hear from y'all and, and share with the council kind of a little bit more about it?
Absolutely. We'll give you a summary and see if there's any further direction at that time.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, Webb, or either one, do y'all know if the county has met with the, have the county met with the helicopter attorney or the helicopter company to, since the county commission's meeting directing the negotiations on their agreement? Has there been actual meetings between two parties?
I don't know the full details of what has occurred on that. I know there were some efforts over the last month, and Kim, I know, is on the line. She has been in contact with the attorney over there. Kim, do you have any new information on that? I have not heard anything in the last two weeks.
No. I asked Councilmember Schmidt to check with you for any additional updates, but I did not have any new information other than that. I believe, from what I understand, the conversations between the parties are somewhat tense. I don't believe there has been a meeting.
That, that is my understanding too, but I'll be happy to reach out to the county if you'd like and...
Do you, do you recall when that commission meeting was, that, that they gave the 60-day notice, roughly?
About, about 30 days ago, I believe.
I, I would love to know if, if, I mean, if you can, have there been meetings that's taken place? Just, because one of the things that they said they were going to do was work with stakeholders, including the City of Destin. And since you guys and our attorney have, doesn't sound like you're aware of any meetings, I'm hoping there hasn't been, well, I wish there was meetings that took place, but if there were, unfortunately, the county's not including us. If there's not meetings, then they can include us. So, yeah, it'd be great if we could just find out a little bit.
I'd be happy to dig into that a little bit deeper and report back to council.
Thank you so much. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I don't have anything tonight. Kim?
Nothing, thank you.
Kyle?
Yeah, I've got something real quick. This just came to me about an hour before the meeting from our special counsel, Ken Ortell. Our appeals that were ongoing with the Sherrys have been resolved, somewhat of mixed bag, but mostly in the city's favor. If you recall, we had some administrative litigation with the Sherrys relating to the East Passage dredge. The administrative law judge had ruled in our favor. We then filed a motion to dismiss at the appellate level for lack of standing after they appealed. That, at the time, the DCA took under advisement, the District Court of Appeal. They did, in fact, rule in our favor, and they dismissed the Sherrys case for lack of standing. This is important because probably in future challenges from the Sherrys, this will act as, it will collateralally stop them from raising these challenges in the future. So that, that's a really significant victory for both the city and the county, who was a part of that appeal. They did, unfortunately, deny our motion for attorney's fees, however, which was consistent with what the ALJ had ruled.
Thank you, sir. All right, last up, public comment. We've got three minutes. Just come up and state your name and your address, and weigh in on anything that's taken place tonight, or anything that just happens to be important to you. I'll look here in the middle, see now it looks like we've got a few folks that'd like to speak, and then I'll work over here to the left.
Jim Bagby, 4700 Seastar Vista. I meant to address this at the beginning, but I didn't want to run out of time. On 4G, my question would have been to the sheriff. Will the sheriff enforce an ordinance that directly contravenes, a city ordinance that directly contravenes the state statute? I understand what you're trying to do on Airport Road, but if the state statute says if it's 35 miles per hour or less, the LSV can go, this isn't about golf carts, this is about low-speed licensed vehicles. And I, I think I know the answer the sheriff will give you. They will not enforce the city ordinance because it is superseded by the state statute. So I would either ask you, if you want to get rid of the low-speed vehicles, okay, raise the speed limit to 36 or 37, so, because if it's 35 or below, low-speed vehicles could go on it. And if you want to improve the safety, then as Mr. Destin said, lower the speed limit to 25 or 30. But thinking that you can outlaw a legal vehicle on a legal road that is approved for sections on those roads, I just don't think that it will work that way. So I'm, just, just a question. I also wanted to thank Chatham. You did a great job for all the time that you're up there, but really appreciate you stepping in. And then I may have misunderstood you, but Ken may have misunderstood you too. Mr. City Manager, there's voting at three locations tomorrow, here, the Community Center, and Corpus Christi Church, because two of the precincts, North and Central, are at Corpus Christi.
Thank you for that correction.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Next. Come on up. Hurry up.
Hurry, we're going to do in two hours.
I'm going to start cutting you back to two minutes. I got to go get a boat in Chalamar.
Ken Walpler.
It's already dark.
Twin Lakes. June 22nd, to answer your question, Mr. Schmidt, that's when the county commissioner talked about the helicopters to answer that. Obviously, from a TDC perspective, I've always been in support of what City Destin has said relative to the expansion, and I will continue to beat that drum. On the ordinance, there were a couple of things that I think are flawed. One is that they're not going to start the local tax collection until March of 2023. That just seems stupid to me. So as a, as a point that's in that ordinance, I would push that to, all right, January 2022. Give them a year to get it figured out, but why, why March of 2023? So anything that you all want, want me to carry forward, clearly, I'm, I'm there to represent, obviously, the bed tax collectors, but more importantly, obviously, the City of Destin, which is where I live and breathe every single day. So I'll continue to fight the fight. I think this is the right thing to do, to expand it to the entire county, but I think we, as I said to the county commissioner and to Mr. Destin's point, you know, we don't set policy, we don't approve things, we just bless them, for the lack of a better description. So Ms. Abear, I didn't get that same survey, so please speak your mind. At the end of the day, they do ask us to, to voice our opinion, and just like going to the county commissioner's meeting, we can voice our opinion, but they'll do what they think's best for everybody. So the more people that speak out in favor of what we think's fair and reasonable for the expansion of the Bed Tax District, I think loud voices make a difference. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Up next. Hurry up. All right. Going to look to the left. All right, anybody over there? Come on up, Jim. John. Sorry. Thank you. Mr. King?
John Green, 3792 Indian Trail. Two things in the low vehicle. I know we're talking about golf carts, but four golf carts fit in one parking spot. Four. We have parking problems all across Destin. You want to be a community with environmental friendly, you got to figure out how to put them on the road, whether it's lower speed or higher speed. But when I think about low vehicle, I think about the, the skateboarding kids that are doing 15 mile an hour on the sidewalks, and those little speedy bikes. Now, I don't know if we can make an ordinance, but I would like to see how the sheriff's department can enforce them. Because I don't know of any golf cart, since I've lived here in Destin, and since 2005 in Walton County, over in Miramar Beach, I don't remember a golf cart somebody dying. Maybe I didn't watch the papers. But I know of three cases of bicycles and skateboarders. One outside my neighborhood in Miramar Beach, one down the street. So they're happening. So I think low vehicle means to me, the skateboards, the bicycles on the right side of the street. I've never seen a police officer stop one, and I've seen cops, police, excuse me, drive right by them, and don't stop. Turn the lights on, just tell the kid to do it. Maybe we can make an ordinance in the city for those vehicles. They got to come and take a class. Maybe that's, could be a solution. But those are, that's the key. We got to catch them before they die. And those are the kids that are going to get killed.
Anyone else? Saying no one else? This meeting is adjourned.